Welcome everyone. Before we call the meeting to order, we will have a prayer by Councilman Schreiber, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father, we thank you for the blessings you grant us each day. We ask that you guide us with your wisdom and the decisions we make. May we demonstrate tolerance and compassion for our fellow man. Bless all of our City of Jefferson employees and keep them safe. Grant your blessings for our citizens and your divine protection to the men and women of our armed forces. Father, we ask you special blessings for those fighting the wildfires in our western states. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone. I will now call to order the Monday, August 6, 2018 City Council Meeting. Mrs. Donaldson, roll call please.
Fitzwater, Graham.
Here.
Hensley.
Here.
Hussey.
Here.
Mahalovich.
Here.
Prather.
Here.
Schreiber.
Here.
Ward.
Here.
Wiseman.
Present.
Thank you. Item three is their motion for adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item four miscellaneous agenda items. I am very happy this evening to introduce our new president of Lincoln University and I would like to invite Dr. Gerald Jones Wolfolk to the podium this evening. We are so happy to have you here and welcome you officially to Jefferson City on behalf of the City Council this evening. So I would like to share a little bit about you and then look forward to hearing from you as well. Dr. Gerald Jones Wolfolk has served as the 20th President of Lincoln University Missouri since June 1, 2018. Wolfolk is prepared to lead the university to the forefront of 21st century HBCUs through her vision of remaining deeply rooted in its historic founding by African-American veterans of the Civil War. The university will also educate and graduate well-prepared future leaders in an environment that seeks and promotes diversity and inclusion. Wolfolk's higher education career focus has been in the area of student affairs and enrollment management. Prior to her announcement as President of Lincoln University, she served as the Vice President of Student Affairs and Enrollment Management at the State University of New York Oswego from 2014 to 2015. While at Oswego, she also held the positions as a Visiting Associate Professor and the Interim Chief of Diversity and Inclusion Officer. She has also served as Vice President for Student Affairs, Enrollment Management and Diversity at Mississippi Valley State University and Vice President for Student Affairs at the City University of New York College of Staten Island. In addition, she served as Assistant to the Vice Chancellor for Student Affairs, Associate Dean of Students for Residential Life and Dean of Student Life at the University of Arkansas at Pine Bluff. Wolfolk holds a Bachelor of Science in Psychology from Jackson State University, a Master of Science in Counselor Education from Iowa State University, and a Doctor of Philosophy degree in Urban Higher Education from Jackson State University. In addition, she completed the Harvard University Institute for Educational Management, the American Association of State Colleges and Universities Council of Independent Colleges Academic Leadership Institute Executive Leadership Academy, the AASCU Millennial Leadership Initiative, and the Indiana University Certificate in Fundraising Management. Wow, you have such a wonderful extensive bio. We are very honored. Yeah, this is you. Wonderful bio here. So happy to have you. And in addition, you're just such a wonderful person. I've enjoyed getting to meet you and look forward to all of us getting to know you even better and officially welcome. So glad to have you here. Tell us a little bit about how happy you are to be here in Jefferson City now.
Well, I am very, I don't know if you're long, but I am very happy to be here in Jefferson City. As a matter of fact, when I was driving from New York here, which is like, I think, I'm in nineteen ninety-four. When I was driving here and I came and I saw the city's name, it said Jefferson City, and I said, I'm in there.
Oh.
And I felt like that since a very different age. I've actually been in Jefferson City many and living in the house on Jackson Street, where everybody knows I live there. But I felt like this is home for me. The people I've met were so friendly and I was probably here all the time. It's just very refreshing to go about the city and people reading me. I was in the grocery store one Sunday and I just come to church and the woman was coming. I was standing there to check out. I was trying up the aisle. She kept looking at me and I was just trying to not, you know, look at her. And she stopped me and she said, "Are you in Jefferson City?" And I said, "Yeah." She said, "It's so lovely to meet you. I've been wanting to meet you. I've read about you in the newspaper. I've been wanting to meet you." And she had tears in her eyes and I had a girth, so I'm like, you know. "You're my right." So that has been my experience in Jefferson City. Just one of the cities. It's a beautiful city. It's a friendly city. It's a quiet city. And apparently we have some of the best leadership in any supporting you in the town. So I'm going to say this is me a good and top of this job. Because many of you I've seen out in Dallas, the mayor I've seen, her many, many times in my interviews. But I just want to say, it's a pleasure to be here with you. It's a pleasure and an honor to serve at Lincoln University. And I know how much we all support Lincoln and I'm going to ask for your continued support and partnership in many things that we do. Lincoln is a great asset to this community. I know I don't have a cell phone, but we're going to make sure that Lincoln is a tangible entity for the next hundred and fifty-two years. We want to do the very best that we can to grow our enrollment, to make sure our students graduate and that they contribute back to this community. But I'd also like to introduce some people who have come.
Please do, yes.
Today, you know, for sale, of course, over here. I think, you know, Roseanne. Everybody knows Roseanne.
Yes.
I think Roseanne made them come. So, so Sandy, I mean, Sandy has been promoted to Vice President for and then especially with financial. We're happy to have her on our team and also used to Jefferson City. And Dr. Margaret Sanning has come through, by the way, to our Christian college in Texas, at Jackson State University in Mississippi, and here at Martha Bay. But Mark is our Vice President for Human Affairs. And of course, everybody in Jefferson City and beyond knows Carlos Graham.
Absolutely.
Who serves so proudly as City Councilman and has also been promoted to staff and day office department. So we look forward to serving Lincoln. We look forward to serving the city of Jefferson and we look forward to serving Cole County and thank you so much. And if there's anything that Lincoln's been doing in partnership with us, do not hesitate to do it.
Thank you, Dr. Wolfolk. And we're honored to have you here in our community and look forward to working together. And I'm glad that you say this feels like home. It really is. And I know that something we've always encouraged people is no matter where you're from or where you went to school, that Lincoln University is our hometown university and we all really enjoy the partnership that we share with Lincoln. So we'll look forward to working with you. And we also have a direct connection with our Lincoln University Student Liaison, Ms. Carolyn Wanjaro. So she attends all of our council meetings as well and we look forward to connecting the students of the university through you as well. And so, does council have any other questions for Dr. Wolfolk this evening?
I must also say that Caroline also works in the President's office as well, so.
Fantastic. We have some great connections here. Well, we definitely enjoy having the student connection here. Carolyn is our second student that we've had as a student liaison from Lincoln and it's wonderful to have that direct connection to the students.
And we will admit, if I did not personally attend the meeting, an invitation to the operation of twenty-seven minutes at Lincoln University, which is in October six, at ten o'clock, eight notes. All right. And it's going to clock eight notes. And on that note, I would just say, let's go Blue Tigers.
Let's go Blue Tigers. Thank you. And before you leave, I'd love to get a picture here too. And a couple of quick things and I'm sure Carolyn will go over it too, but while you're here is casino night for Lincoln University is this Saturday that I'm sure Carolyn will go over, but that's open to the community. It's a fundraiser for Lincoln, so we'll look forward to that as well. So I'll see you Saturday night and hopefully our community members. So I would ask if you come forward for a photo and if you'd like to also include the others that are here, all of the ones that you introduced. And Carolyn, if you would also like to come up and Carlos, and then if the council would come up behind us and we'll get a group photo here welcoming, welcoming you. So thank you for being here. Welcome.
Oh, Ken too.
Ken, you can adjutant. No, no, I'm going to be back here. I'm beyond adjunct. Sandy, take care of me. I'm part-time instructor. And that'll be the way she says, "Here," and "Here," so.
Okay, everybody ready? All right, one, two, three. All right, the next item is item B. We're going to recognize Public Works' Street Department Retiree, Mr. Louis Alber from Mr. Matt Marash.
And if we can do them both at once.
Sure.
You've got Eddie Bates here as well.
We sure would like to welcome both of them. And Mr. Eddie Bates.
No, they don't want to, but I'm going to make them. Come on. I can't make one. He doesn't work as well. No, hey, we want to appreciate them coming and so we can recognize them. I think they've been really important to the city and I just want to congratulate both of them on their retirements and starting their new chapter of their lives and very well-deserved retirements. But I just had a couple of quick things and Britt's got some individual comments about each one, but you know, I've been really fortunate. They were both working here when I started and they're really two great capable individuals. And not only I should be fortunate, but the citizens for having these guys running our street department and our construction crews at the street department. But if it was street or stormwater related and we addressed it, these are the two individuals actually responsible for getting the work done and organizing the crews and they have a lot of help in their crews, but it takes good leadership. And so we appreciate them for that and I appreciate them for that. You know, they did big and small things. You know, you might hear of people, you know, when it's snowing, they come out and they're the guys who organize the crews and get it going or ice events or asphalt overlay projects. Those are the biggies. But actually, the President just reminded me of something that I remember Louie telling me one time a long time ago is that, you know, we want our city looking good and clean and that's one of his jobs. So it was funny, I'd get in a truck with either one of these guys on many occasions, some project going on across town. And as we're driving there, they're constantly, you know, I'll be talking to them about something, they'd be picking up the mic and, hey, we got a sign that's crooked or we got a pothole here. And about fifteen different things as we just drove across town. Every time, they were always doing it. So they're not only the big projects, but also looking for those small things that really make the city look like it does and really, really a nice city. So, you know, so I just wanted to congratulate them on that. And like I said, Britt, Britt has got some individual comments, but you know, we're hiring good people to replace them, but you know, you're going to lose a lot of history and they're retiring within one month of each other. Louie's already retired and Eddie's tomorrow. Two days.
As Matt said, I appreciate the opportunity to talk about these two fine men standing next to me. Lou Alber began his employment with the city right after high school, working with our wastewater division. After a little more than four years, he decided to move on to the private sector and went on to a very successful career in the local construction company and worked mainly on the interstate system. Fortunately for us, Lou returned to the city approximately 22 years ago when he accepted the position of Street Supervisor, where he oversaw the work of much of the construction and maintenance work going on for the street division. After a few years, he was promoted to the position of Street Superintendent, now known as the Street Manager, and served in that capacity until July, this last month. During his time as lead for the street department, Lou has worked on a lot of areas, but one of his favorite projects was the annual street overlay program. He said once, "I like the milling overlay program. When you start out, you have a very rough street, but in a relatively short period of time, it turns out smooth and nice." Lou always has been an exemplary employee. He is a past recipient of the yearly Employee Service Award. That award recognizes his exemplary leadership and work in all areas of his responsibility in the street department, not the least of which was his efforts in leading the city's snow and ice removal efforts. He was asked once what he was the most proud of and he replied how dedicated the snow drivers are to clearing the roads for the public. During his retirement, you'll probably find Lou on his farm up in North Missouri or helping a neighbor pour concrete, but likely you will find his grandkids close by. Eddie Bates. Eddie started working for the city as summer help. I guess it would have been in 1974. 1974. He worked two years as a seasonal, part-time employee mowing grass for what was then known as the Health Department. In May of 76, by motion of the City Council, not everybody can say that, Eddie was transferred to full-time employment with the street division as a maintenance worker. And he was 20 years old at the time. Since that time, Eddie worked in all areas of the street department, holding various titles, but in 2003, he was promoted to the position of Street Supervisor. In this capacity, Eddie has overseen much of the maintenance work of the various crews that he supervised. Eddie is a past recipient as well of the yearly Employee Service Award. The award recognized his dedication to the citizens demonstrated by his long years of service and dedication to getting the job done right. When asked what he likes to do most about his job, he says, "Helping people." And he has done that a lot over the years. For the past 15 years at least, Eddie has been the voice of the street department and handled numerous calls for service from the public. Everyone who calls is treated with respect and a desire to meet their needs to the best of our ability. Eddie is also known for his almost encyclopedic memory of the history of the street division. With over 42 years, that's 42-plus years, as he likes to say, of service, an incredible memory, and a filing system you wouldn't believe. If you've ever wondered why something is the way it is, he is the first person to ask. Upon retirement, you'll probably find Eddie on his Harley somewhere, is what I suspect. On a personal note, it has been my pleasure to work with both of these fine men during the past 15 years of my service with the Public Works Department. During that time, I've received countless compliments about the quality of work done by our great staff, especially as it relates to snow removal. And I'm here to tell you that these two men are one of the reasons why that is the case. As they leave, they're leaving with 64 years of experience and we will greatly miss them. But we're fortunate to have the people that they've trained to take their place and we're looking forward to it. And I've been regretting this day for a long time because they make me look good and I appreciate it. And that's a lot of job. Thank you.
And with that.
Thank you both. And on behalf of the City of Jefferson, we sincerely thank you both for your many years of wonderful, exceptional service. And it's really amazing to think of what a positive impact you've had on all of our lives here and making things better for our community. I loved hearing what your favorite things were. It's just, you can tell the passion and enthusiasm that you have for the city, for the streets, for everything about your job. So we sincerely appreciate it and we thank you and wish you all the very best in retirement. We will miss you. So at this time, I'd like to make a presentation and then we'll have maybe Gail take some photos. And then if council wants to come up here, we'll also have some pictures together.
Make sure Britt has your phone number, right?
He's got our number. Three o'clock in the morning.
Okay, ready? One, two, three. All right, item five, public hearings. There are none. No appointments by the mayor. Number six. Number seven, we do have a presentation this evening from staff consultants and invited guests. I'd like to invite Mr. Todd Spalding and Ms. Ashley Varner to talk about the Spin Bike Share Program update. So tell us about this bike you have here.
Well, this is, yeah, another visitor here to our meeting tonight. This is the Spin Bikes. Maybe you've been seeing around town. Steve asked me to bring us tonight and to kind of give you an overview of where we're at and answer any questions that you have. First, I want to introduce Ashley Varner. You all know probably Ashley, right? Ashley was the integral part of this to bring bike share to Jefferson City. And I think it was no small task and I can't thank her enough for the work that she did. It was greatly appreciated. So we went out for a national search for a bike share program and Spin scored the best out of San Francisco. There was quite a few. You know, this is a program that's just, it's exploding all across our country. And so we really felt Spin's model, we really liked. They come into town, they use local companies. Redwill is actually doing work for them. So Nick has been great to work with from Redwill. They're actually, you know, when they have a problem, they can call them, they communicate if they need to get fixed, if they need to be moved or whatever. So it's been great. So if you don't have, Ashley, you want to do the whole program of how you get on one? I mean, you know.
Sure, put on your cellphone.
Yeah, so on your cellphone, there's an app called Spin, right? Go ahead, Ashley.
Download your, go to your Play Store and you're going to search for Spin-Ride Your Way. Download the app and literally, once you pull up, open the app, it looks like a map and it'll say where you're at. You're at City Hall and it'll start to show you probably little orange dots and those are bikes near you. And then it'll allow you to log in through Facebook or you just enter your personal payment information. Once you enter that in, then it'll take you, it'll send a code. It'll ask you a QR code, which there's two on the bike, three actually. One, three, here's one, here's one, and here's one. They're all the same. And it just sends that signal up to the satellite, comes back down to the bike, and it unlocks it. Right here is your lock. It's already unlocked and Todd rode it in tonight. So right now.
Let's get the charger.
So now the signal went up and he's locking his bike. It's shutting off the timer, so he's no longer going to be charged for using the bike. It's a dollar for every 30 minutes. And so it's really that simple, guys. It's really that simple. If you haven't ridden the bike, it really is like the old saying, it's just like riding a bike. You just get on and your bike tells how to do it. So we encourage you all to do so.
Will it have a bell on it? It does have a bell. But what makes it a dock, this is a dockless system. In some cities, you see where they have these big docks around the city where you have to put the bike in these docks, right? This is a dockless system. And we really, really like this system. It's basically, the rider gets to dictate where it's convenient for them. And so this can be docked wherever, certainly not in a way of everything. We've worked with other department heads. We know that it's kind of the places that the people call. So if there's problems, they can remove them. But this is going to let the community show us where they want these bikes. And I think that's a really important piece of this. They don't have to be charged up. They don't have to be inside. The basket has a little solar panel to charge them that gets them ready to go. So it's just a, it's been a great system so far. So we've had a great, great response from the community. You know, what we're trying to accomplish with this, right, is to get people out to have fun first. But it's also practical things, getting to work. I've heard from people of everything that we wanted to hear them, you know, say, they've been to the grocery store with these things. They've been to work with these things and they went out and had fun with these things. And that's what we want. Get them out of their cars, get them doing some exercise. This is what we look, we look to work on. Seventy-five bikes are on the ground so far and we have more that are coming. We're looking at electric scooters, which is a huge thing around the country right now and some other things. So this will grow as our community wants it to.
Great. Maybe grab the mic too. I've been listening and I kind of forgot. Grab it out of there. I think that way everybody can hear too.
I'm sorry about that.
So it's that simple and just wherever they are, you just use your app and it's that easy to download and then leave it where you want to park it?
Please keep in mind, we encourage helmet use. Pedestrians have the right of way on sidewalks. So we encourage vehicles to be on the roads. Therefore, bicycles have to follow the same rules of the road as a motor vehicle does. Therefore, bike lanes are on the road, et cetera. So please keep that in mind. Please do not park these on the sidewalk. We have no postings around. I am pretty loud without this thing. Again, just encourage you to use the road versus the sidewalk and then to park them in appropriate areas, which is not on the sidewalk. And it's, you know, on green space or other areas where bike racks. And so we've worked really hard to create the infrastructure that's appropriate for more and more cyclists here in Jefferson City. So you're going to see a pretty large amount of bike racks around town and we're working to always increase that. One other benefit that I do want to mention for the city is that when we, on a monthly basis, we will create, we will get data reports. How many users, where they're going. It's going to create a heat map essentially. And this is going to help all of you do your work easier simply because it will already show you where these people are cycling. So where do we need more bike lanes in our community? Where do we need to connect greenway trails? You know, all of those things. It's just going to be a really neat way to continue to flourish that culture of cycling here and support them. So.
Well, what a fun idea. And remind us again how they're funded. I have had a couple of questions about how this program came to be. I know you mentioned that briefly, touched on that, but with the grant funding and that it wasn't necessarily a city-funded project.
That's right. That was another great model that we felt like Spin and some other companies are doing. But this is currently no direct cost to us. The company comes in, they establish relationships with our local businesses and the community. They raise the funds necessary to do this as well as certainly the money that they raise from the rides. So, you know, bikes here programs are all over the place, but this is the model now that's really working across the country. And we were, I felt like we did our due diligence to find this. So, yeah.
Very cool. Well, I have not been on one yet.
No.
But I'm going to have to. My assistant Jennifer in my office has. She rode one. Has any council members yet been on one? Has anyone been on that orange spin yet? Well, we're going to have to make that happen. Carlos, I see.
It sounds like a challenge. Sounds like a challenge.
I think this, I'm going to challenge every council member that we are all going to have an opportunity to ride that. Yes.
Don't forget, it's on, Mayor Turgeon is going to, she is going to lead us. It's going to be a mayor-led bicycle race.
That's right.
In conjunction with the Oktoberfest happening in October 7.
Yes, with Porch Fest. Yes, with Porch Fest.
Porch Fest.
Porch Fest, yes. So, I have committed to the mayor's bike ride. That sounds like a challenge there, too, so, but I'm very much excited about it. And I said, "I don't have a bike," and Ashley said, "Well, no problem. We have bikes right here now for you." So, very exciting. Any questions of, uh, council? Are there, are they all the same size? Are there kids, or is it all the, pretty much the adult size, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other, uh, council questions? Okay, very cool. Well, let's bring that bike up and get a picture.
My app works, all right.
Okay, let's try the app. We'll watch it in action here.
They scan in a QR code. It says unlocking.
Oh, there it unlocked. We'll bring it on forward, so we can get a picture, and, so. So does council want to come up here and get the picture, or behind, or however? Come on up, and let, let's get a picture with this bike.
Good one, Eric, come on. I'll just ride this thing right out here tonight.
Hey Todd, as soon as you get the motorized one in, let me know. I'm going to race somebody, but until then, I'm going to hold off.
You have been challenged, Carlos. I know you won't let me down.
Nah.
Yeah, what would you do if I just rode out of City Hall right now?
I'd say, "Ride on."
Ride on.
I would, I'd challenge Mark.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. All right. Well, that's pretty-
Down by the river.
Down by the river.
In Jeff City Mo. Well, speaking of, that kind of leads, thank you, Steve, right into my announcements. Thanks, Steve. Yeah, you're welcome. So, announcements by Council Mayor and staff. Speaking of riding your bike down by the river, if you haven't yet received a copy of this Bridge to Business Commemorative Magazine from the Chamber of Commerce, I encourage you to check it out. There is, uh, some pictures and information about the proposed bicentennial bridge that we've been talking about over the years, that would go over the railroad tracks at the Capitol, down to the riverfront. So, information here, and absolutely, you would have an opportunity to ride your bike, or walk down to the river. So there's a really great ride up here, and it shows kind of the concept drawing, going over the railroad tracks, and how, how that's going to look. So very exciting to, to see that. And speaking of that information, there will be an update at the next city council meeting, so we'll give you all the details, and show a little slideshow about the latest and greatest on that project. And speaking of the chamber, they did just have their 125th anniversary, so we presented a city proclamation for that a couple of weeks ago at the celebration, and, uh, the chamber came together 125 years ago. We presented it here as well, but, uh, to build the first bridge across the river at Bolivar. So imagine what a feat that was to get across the bridge, and now here we are, uh, thinking about another bridge. So, very exciting, but it's a great magazine. A few other announcements. So after you ride your bike, you can go to, uh, City Hall on Tuesdays to get Chick-fil-A. We are raising money for, uh, this is for United Way, so all the proceeds benefit United Way. This is on Tuesdays this month. You can, uh, drive by City Hall and pick up Chick-fil-A Original, or Spicy Chicken Biscuits for only $3 on August 7th, which is tomorrow, August 14th. I think it's those two days, from 7:00 to 8:00 a.m. So stop by City Hall for breakfast, and they're only $3, but maybe give them a little extra for United Way. So it's cool to see our employees, um, raising money for United Way. I know they sold out the first week, so don't wait too long if you want some Chick-fil-A from, from city staff. A few other, um, announcements I wanted to make is, uh, I've been on vacation, so while I was gone, I want to thank, uh, Pro-Tim Ken Hussey for filling in. Councilman Hussey there, uh, we had a grand opening at the Walmart on Stadium, so Ken was there and gave a, a presentation on behalf of the city, so appreciate you being there. Is there anything you want to add about that event? Uh, something you mentioned, that it was one of the first, not one of the first, but an early Walmart. When you think about the history of Walmart in Jefferson City, the num, they number the stores you had mentioned?
Mm-hmm. They do. They number the stores, and I guess this is store 29, so I learned that it's the 29th Walmart to come into existence.
That's pretty impressive, and to see it now, you know, refurbished, and, and appreciate you making that presentation on behalf of the city. Um, a couple other proclamations that were made while I was gone. Of course, the, uh, J.C.'s Cole County Fair was last week, and two bands that performed, some local bands, that have really had some great national headlines, uh, Shaman's Harvest and Murphy's Ford. Both bands performed last week, so Councilman Kimna presented proclamations on behalf of the city. So if you saw the video on Facebook when he gave the Shaman's Harvest one, I think he's kind of a natural, and I'm surprised he didn't just kind of get on the bus and keep going. He just kind of looked like he was right at home on that stage. But it was cool. Some of the members have gone to Jefferson City High School, and, and it was neat to see that they're touring nationally, and they headlined, um, the J.C.'s Fair last week, along with Murphy's Ford, so those proclamations were given. And, um, I also want to ask, uh, Lieutenant Heisland to give us an update this evening on the National Night Out, which is tomorrow.
Sergeant Mathurn is heading up the National Night Out. I'm not exactly sure the exact number of parties that they have set up yet, but, uh, his number to be reached is, is a 634-6347. I'm thinking they have five to 10 is what I'm guessing right now that they have set up, but I know they were still taking calls from different Neighborhood Watch programs. But if anyone's interested in participating or forming a Neighborhood Watch, they can just get ahold of Sergeant Mathurn, 634-6347.
Thank you, Lieutenant Heisland. On behalf of the Police Department, that's always a great evening to get neighborhoods together, get to know your neighbors. It makes for safer neighborhoods, and many council members often try to find those ward, uh, neighborhoods in their ward that are having the block parties. So, um, tomorrow, of course, is Election Day, so remind everybody to vote, and then in the evening after they vote, they can find the block party and, and get to connect with the neighbors. So, uh, my last announcement is the, uh, that Election Day is tomorrow, encouraging everyone to vote. Uh, there is Proposition L, which is to leveling, level the play, playing field, which is also, um, on tomorrow's, um, ballot, and want to encourage everybody to vote. Uh, that particular item is for the use tax, and so that's a very important election tomorrow, so just reminding everybody, um, that the polls are open 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. tomorrow on Tuesday, August 7th. Um, and then Councilman Hussey has an announcement for Public Works and Planning.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The Public Works and Planning Committee meeting this week has been canceled, and we will meet again at our regularly scheduled meeting in September.
Thank you. Are there any other council, uh, announcements this evening? Okay, you can get a full schedule of meetings on JeffersonCityMo.gov on our calendar. Item nine, we have our Lincoln University student representative, Ms. Wanjaro.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and, um, council as a whole. I just have two announcements, and one of them I'm going to have to get back to the council. On it is about Casino Night. Interesting, I didn't even know that was this weekend. I think I've been too engrossed in my, uh, summer endeavors in the President's Office and not having summer school, that I'm slowly, it's slowly, slowly starting to sink in. Summer is almost over, and school is about to start. But, um, as mentioned earlier, Casino Night is this coming Saturday, August 11th, at 5:30. I don't have the information about the tickets and how much they are.
I bet Carlos can get us tickets, or tell us who to get tickets from. Just call Carlos, right?
Just, just call me.
Okay.
Okay.
It'd be whatever the ticket price is, plus my fee, so, it'd be fun.
Absolutely. And then the other announcement, as, um, our very own, uh, Dr. Wolfog President, um, the inauguration, her inauguration is going to be on August 7th, and it starts at 10:00 a.m. August 5th. Yes. Ooh, see?
Did she say October?
Thank you, Carlos.
October?
It's October.
I think she said October.
Yes. In my, in my, I'm still-
Now, the 5th is-
It's a Friday. Yes, October 5th.
October 5th.
Yes.
Friday, October 5th.
Friday, October 5th, and it starts at 10:00 a.m., and then the ball is going to be at 7:00. And the tickets are $25, and all proceeds go towards raising money for scholarships. And that will be all.
Wonderful. And then we will also see you, I'm sure, at the Blue Tiger Fest, which is, we still have a council meeting before that, but I'll go ahead and mention it so people can get that on their calendars. It would be Wednesday, August 22nd, I believe, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. in downtown, and I always look most forward to the ice cream sundaes that they do that night. So, uh, council is certainly invited to come downtown for Blue Tiger Fest. Well, welcome back to, uh, classes, Ms. Wanjaro. Glad to have you here, and good luck with the semester. Thank you. Any questions for Lincoln? Okay. Item 10, presentations from the gallery on specific bills. We have none signed up this evening, so we'll go to item 11, which is the Consent Agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 12, Bills Introduced, 2018-28.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a development agreement with F&amp;F Development LLC pertaining to the redevelopment of the 500 block of Missouri Boulevard.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. As Clerk indicated, this is a development agreement with F&amp;F, and it's for the redevelopment of the St. Mary's property, and basically, this agreement, uh, transfers, uh, real property to the developer for the, for, in, in consideration of $15,000, and also it, uh, obligates them to grant us right-of-ways for extensions of greenways and sidewalks in the area. Uh, I might mention, the next three bills are also related to F&amp;F, just real quickly, but, uh, those are easements and right-of-way vacations related to the St. Mary's redevelopment. So as they, they looked at the property, trying to clean those titles up, and so we've kind of collected them all here in one, one place, and, and this will allow that redevelopment, redevelopment to proceed.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Marash? Councilman Hussey?
Sorry, just one. The $15,000 that F&amp;F is paying the city, are we dedicating that towards the construction of a future greenway, or is that just kind of going to the general fund?
It was, uh, it, it was just, it's just a, a general fund, uh, revenue, but it's for possible, um, participation in, in that project. So it's, it's, you know, the idea that money's fungible, and we can go into the account, and then we won't require them to build that because they've contributed to the, uh, you know, financially to the construction of that, of that particular improvement. But it's, we're not obligated to hold on to that until that project proceeds. You know, we can move money around if we need to.
Any further questions? Okay. 2018-29.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, vacating and discontinuing a portion of the 500 block of West Elm Street right-of-way.
Mr. Marash, anything to add there?
Uh, nothing to add. It's part of the St. Mary's redevelopment.
Okay, any further questions on that? Uh, 2018-30.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, vacating and discontinuing a portion of the 600 block of Walnut Street right-of-way.
Anything more to add, and any further questions? Okay. 2018-31.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, vacating and discontinuing utility easements in the previously vacated parts of the 400 and 500 blocks of the West Miller Street, the 500 and 600 blocks of Harrison Street, the 600 block of West Elm Street, and an unnamed alley south of in-lot numbers 768, 769, and 770.
All right, anything further on that? Okay. 2018-32.
An ordinance amending Section 29-151, charge for notice of intent to disconnect and appendix Y schedule of administrative fees, permits, licenses, and other charges of the Code of the City of Jefferson, Missouri.
Mr. Marash?
Uh, thank you. Uh, Clerk indicated this is a, a code amendment. It would allow for a $10 door hanger fee for the notice of, uh, uh, intent to disconnect water for late, late sewer feeds.
Thank you. Any council questions? Okay. 2018-33.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter 3 Advertising and Signs.
Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, this bill would refresh Chapter 3 of the city code and bring it up to date with respect to signage case law. Uh, it is a fairly lengthy bill. I think it comes in at 33 pages. Uh, within your council packet, it is a four-page staff summary, uh, that breaks down the effect of, of the bill. In general, you can sum up the bill, um, uh, the effect of it, uh, into three general categories. Uh, the first is fixing a number of technical items within, uh, the, the sign code, Chapter 3. Uh, the bill is a, a fairly major rewrite, uh, of major portions of Chapter 3, uh, and the purpose of reorganizing various sections, and making sure that the typical items addressed within a municipal sign code are properly addressed within ours. We went out and researched a number of other city's sign codes, and made sure that ours, uh, had all of the common elements that, that need to be there. Uh, the second is, uh, to change certain signage allowances. Uh, most notably, the two things I'll point out, is an increase in building mounted signage height limits. So for, for many years, the maximum height of a sign has been set at 32 feet. That applies to both pole signs, and also building mounted signs. We've had a number of variance requests over the years to increase the height of signage on buildings, and so, uh, proposing, uh, a change to, to bring that up to 50 feet, allow those signs to be a little bit higher up on buildings, but not affect the 32-foot maximum for pole signs. Also is to switch the downtown district, uh, signage allowances for properties from a street frontage, uh, based calculation to a facade area, uh, based calculation. Uh, when the last sign code rewrite was done in 2002, or, I'm sorry, 2012, uh, all the other zoning districts were switched over to a facade-based building signage allocation, except the downtown district. We think that's gone very well. Uh, it's been very receptive to, uh, businesses in the area, and so I think it's time to switch the downtown district over to that method as well. Uh, the third item is to reorganize, um, the temporary signage allowances in order to come in compliance with, with current case law. It's been a recent Supreme Court ruling, a ruling of, uh, the town of Gilbert, Arizona, versus Reed. Uh, it's basically caused cities across the country to have to redo their temporary signage sections of their code, and so Jefferson City kind of falls into that category as well. Our site, our signage allowances for temporary signs are in conflict with Supreme Court ruling. So this bill would bring, uh, bring our sign code back into, into compliance, so to speak, with the Supreme Court ruling. Uh, the bill would divide temporary signage into two different kinds of categories, uh, in general. First is, well, commercial versus non-commercial signage. So much of the temporary signage you see out there is really non-commercial, uh, type of signage, political signs, or, or signs that are kind of representing free speech things, versus commercial signage, which would be temporary signs that are advertising products or services, you know, typically in front of a, of a business. And then the bill would, uh, uh, regulate this temporary signage based on zoning districts. So have certain allocations within the residential districts for those two different types of signage, and different allocations within the commercial districts. So I've attempted to, oh, I'm sorry, uh, this, this item comes to you after being reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Planning and Zoning Commission made some recommendations, uh, on, on the content of the bill. The recommendations have been incorporated into the bill that's in front of you. Um, staff have some other recommend, recommended amendments, and those have been distributed to you in the form of a, uh, a bill amendment sheet, uh, this evening, and I'll touch on each of those here in combination with the next couple slides. So I've attempted to, to outline what would be allowed in terms of temporary signage for, um, for those two different examples, the commercial districts and then the residential districts. So I'll speak for the commercial districts first. Uh, as mentioned, it would be divided between commercial signage, things advertising products and services, and non-commercial, such as political signs and, and free speech type of signs. And so, uh, as far as commercial signage, really the allowance would be to allow signage on the building, or within the window space, and not, uh, freestanding advertising, uh, signage out in front of the business. Uh, again, that is, is what is in effect today under the current sign code. And then for non-commercial signage, uh, the allowance would be, uh, to, to allow one sign per street frontage, and then during election season, uh, the bill, uh, that's before you outlines two additional signs per street frontage during that period around an election. Uh, staff are actually proposing for that to, to be, uh, brought up to four, um, and then also have an allowance for small signs, smaller political signs, uh, for, for properties. And then for residential, uh, and then, uh, uh, things such as sandwich board signs, things that are fairly popular within the downtown districts and other areas around town, uh, there'd be an allowance for those built into the bill. And then in the residential districts, um, uh, for the commercial signage would not be, be permitted. be, be permitted, uh, residential districts, but for, for non-commercial signage. And this was an item that the Planning and Zoning Commission had recommendations on, again, which were built into the bill, uh, that the original proposal that went in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission had a, had a limit on the number of, of signs, basically, uh, of, of political or otherwise signs that could, could be in front of a property. And their recommendation was to not have a limit on that, uh, to, 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 to allow, uh, residential property owners, uh, to, to place, uh, however many signs that they feel appropriate in their property. Uh, staff tends to recommend that, that there be some sort of limit, but the limit be fairly high to allow a lot of flexibility, but, uh, address, uh, what could, could be a really intrusive type of situation of a property owner having a, a very, very large number of signs on their property. And so, um, the, the bill summer, or the, the bill amendment sheet outlines, uh, three, three changes. The first was, uh, a change to, um, from a, from an unlimited number of signs in residential situations to a maximum of 10 per property. Uh, the second is an increase in the number of political, or signs during political seasons to four per street frontage, so basically allowing commercial properties to have a, a, a larger number, uh, during, during the political seasons. And, uh, and then the third, uh, is actually a removal of setback requirements. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended removing setback. Uh, there, there is a, an idea of, of having a setback requirement from signs to make sure they're not encroaching on the curb of a street, uh, and basically removing that altogether, uh, for both commercial and residential districts, uh, from the code. Uh, basically, it's a very long explanation of saying that what we tried to do, and, and we have the benefit of this being a political season right now, but going out and looking at the number of signs that are on display in the community right now, and trying to set the numbers, uh, that are, are being proposed with this, this bill amendment, uh, to a level that is, is already out there today. Um, and, uh, with the goal of allowing, you know, the, what, what I think people are expecting, something, you know, the, the level of signage that is out there today, uh, but, uh, making sure that there's protection in place in, in case there's anything truly obtrusive, uh, a, a very large number of signs that, that a property owner might place. Uh, this bill was recommended for approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, again, with the amendments that I referenced, but at their meeting of July 12th, scheduled for a public hearing at the August 20th, uh, council meeting. If the changes that are outlined on the sheet and that I've presented, uh, are appropriate, staff would appreciate a direction by, uh, either the sponsor or the council, uh, to incorporate those changes into a substitute bill, uh, so that we can put it on, on, in the packet and have it ready for the next meeting.
Thank you. So before we do some questions and deliberation, I'll ask if there is, uh, a motion to amend the bill with this substitute. Councilman Graham?
Madam, Madam Mayor, as the sponsor of this bill, I'd like to make a motion to amend Bill 2018-33 to reflect the changes in the bill amendment sheet and directing staff to prepare a substitute bill to 2018-33.
Is there a second? Wonderful. Any further discussion on the amendment? Councilman Hesse?
Just for clarity's sake, Mr. Barron, I mean, I'm reading the notes regarding the, the cap of 10 signs. And so the original draft that came to us at Public Works and Planning talked about a cap of, was it two plus an additional two? P&amp;Z feedback was no cap, and we're talking about a 10 kind of being a compromise. Was the tenor of the discussion related at P&amp;Z? Was it really about a higher cap, or was it more about, we shouldn't be in the business of restricting how many signs somebody has in their yard, period, regardless of that number?
Well, I'd, I'd hate to try to speak for, you know, for the, the Planning and Zoning Commission as a whole, and I think each of the members probably have, have different thoughts, uh, on that, on that topic. I mean, I think in general, they were, they were a little reluctant to, to have literally an unlimited number, but, uh, uh, you know, trying to nail down a number on such a, a lengthy bill and just one item with it can be a little bit differ, difficult in a public hearing setting. Um, you know, so there, there is that. Uh, 10 really is just kind of a, uh, you know, a number that, that, you know, seems kind of appropriate from a staff level. I, I think if you, if you look out there, you could probably find a few properties right now that have, you know, close to 10 signs on it, and they, they probably stand out a little bit as, as having quite a few, uh, depending on how you feel on, on signage. But I think the general desire is to, that there needs to be something, but, but in general, try not to be in the, the business of, of, of that too heavily.
Yeah, and I would say I don't necessarily have a concern. There's just a, a, i- if the fundamental basis of the opinion of P&amp;Z or those members is to not cap, period, because they don't want to restrict it, then that's, that's different than sort of trying to reach a compromised number. And so there could be, P&amp;Z might look at 10 and even say, nope, we don't, you know, members might say, we don't agree with that. So I'm just trying to navigate that to see if, if we're moving ourselves to a higher cap, to sort of, i- i- in the opinion to sort of appease maybe P&amp;Z on their recommendations, when in fact, placing a number there to begin with will not appease or please or satisfy their concerns about capping in that regard. Again, I don't have a problem moving forward with the amendment as proposed. I just would advise council, I think, here that some of the feedback that I've seen on social media regarding this, and some comments, even I think emails or whatever, has been, you shouldn't cap how many signs I can have in my yard, period. It's my property, free speech, these sorts of things. And so, again, I'm, 10 sounds like a reasonable number. But it may be that any number is unreasonable to somebody who holds the opinion that, that there should not be a cap, period. So that's what I was trying to gather from the planning and zoning conversation.
All right. Are there any further, um, questions? So we have a motion and second to amend, um, the bill to accept these amendments, so, at this time, we'll take a roll call on accepting the amendment.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hesse?
Aye.
Kimna?
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
All right. The amendment passes, so for the next meeting, we'll have, uh, the bill is amended there. Are there any further questions or deliberation at this time, or questions? Councilman Hensley?
Question, um, probably for, uh, Mr. Moulman. Uh, is commercial versus non-commercial a distinction that courts have recognized with respect to speech regulation?
Yeah, it has. Um, so in the wake of, uh, Reed versus Gilbert, that was a big question. Um, the, the opinion isn't 100% clear whether or not that distinction remains, but, um, throughout the country, nothing on direct in the Eighth Circuit where, where, where the, where Missouri sits, but, uh, courts throughout the country have recognized that the commercial versus non-commercial dichotomy still exists, and that you can regulate those, uh, two types of speech differently.
Good. Thank you.
Any further questions on the bill? Okay. Thank you. And also, thank you, Mr. Barron. I know there's been extensive public, uh, comments and meetings and other, uh, input that went into this, so appreciate that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It has been a very long project.
Yes. Thank you. 2018-34.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, adopting a budget and personnel classification plan for the city, for the period of November 1st, 2018, to October 31st, 2019, and appropriating money in the city treasury to pay the cost of operating the city government during that period in accordance with the budget.
Mrs. Miller?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So the operating budget for the period November 1st, 2018, to October 31st, 2019, uh, has been recommended for approval by the mayor. The proposed general revenue budget is projected to be $32,807,390.05. And with additional funding from other funds and for capital projects, it brings the total City of Jefferson budget for FY19 to $65,681,530.53.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Councilman Hesse?
Is Councilman Prather going to suspend the rules and just take this up tonight?
[laughing].
I think we'll wait and let the rest of the staff to have their, have their say.
I think we call that the Mike Harvey Amendment, that he usually moves at the very first meeting to accept the budget as proposed. So just heads up, we have a new councilman, Hensley, if you want to throw that one out.
I, I, I won't object, though.
[laughing]. All right. Okay. And, um, anything to add, Councilman Prather, on upcoming budget meetings? We have one this week?
Oh, we have one this, this Thursday at 5:30 in this room.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you. 2018-35.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, providing for the levy of city taxes and establishing the rate of taxation for the City of Jefferson, Missouri, for the year 2018.
Mrs. Miller?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, the state statute requires that cities establish their property tax rates on an annual basis. Uh, for the general fund, the proposed tax rate is 46 cents per 100 assessed value, and the Fireman's Retirement Fund is .0961, for a total of 50, 0.5561 cents.
Thank you. Any questions of council? Okay. 2018-36.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a supplemental agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for service transportation program funds.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. The, uh, supplemental agreement, uh, relates, uh, to our airport, uh, funding. It, uh, excuse me, I'm on the wrong, wrong page here. Uh, this relates to lengthening the time for our Clark Avenue project. It originally called out, uh, the completion date of, uh, May of, uh, 2018, and it'd be, uh, moved to April of 2019. We're staying in the Clark Avenue with a grant-funded project through MoDOT, and, uh, experienced some delays in getting some of that work done.
Any questions? Okay. 2018-37.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a $198,149 agreement with TEB Constructors LLC for the RWRF Dry Biosolids Building Projects.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. As Clerk indicated, this is a construction contract over at our wastewater treatment plant. Basically, it's a, a storage area, a roof storage area to hold biosolids, which is kind of the, the product that we end up, up land applying to fields over there, uh, after, after the treatment process is, is initiated. And, uh, this would allow us to store it during wet weather periods, so we have additional storage built in.
Any questions? All right. 2018-38.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, approving an amended and restated charter of the City of Jefferson, and submit such charter to a vote of the citizens of the City of Jefferson.
Mr. Moulman?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, [clears throat]. On the agenda tonight are, uh, five bills that all deal with, um, city charter amendments and, uh, submitting, uh, questions to the voters. If it's all right, I'd like to just take these up all at once. Um, first, uh, 2018-038. Proposition A, um, is a general change to the, uh, to the, uh, city charter. Um, a, uh, the, the bulk majority of the changes that are included in Proposition A, um, are technical in nature, and probably the most, uh, common is, uh, genderal, gender neutralization of the document. So switching out, um, pronouns like he and his, um, and using, uh, gender-neutral pronouns, and, um, trying to make a specific effort to, um, to not use pronouns, but, um, actually, actually name the person to whom a section is, is referring to. I think that makes for a clearer, um, a clearer, uh, piece of language. Uh, most notably, the office of councilman is changed to the office of council member. Um, another thing that we did, uh, that's, uh, technical in nature is that there's an elimination of, uh, of, uh, references to dates that no longer have applicability. So, um, throughout the document, you'll see, uh, rec, or, uh, references to, to dates, and we've tried to remove those when, uh, those dates are no longer, um, operable, uh, in the document, just to clean it up a bit. Another recommendation that is, uh, that is, uh, technical is to, uh, um, change the measuring date on which candidates' election qualifications. Um, the current document states that those, uh, qualifications are measured on election dates. That makes for qualifications that are very hard to enforce. So what we do is change the, um, the measuring date to the date that, uh, that a person files to be on a ballot. So that way, we have a, 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 a date that is before the election, uh, that you can measure their qualifications. Um, and then finally, another technical change is, is to capitalize the word "city" throughout the document when referencing the City of Jefferson itself. Uh, specific change to the charter, um, that are included in, uh, Proposition A, um, includes a change to Section 3.8 relating to the city clerk, which removes the, uh, residency requirement, uh, that is currently on the city clerk to reside within the city limits. Section 3.11 are some pretty significant, uh, changes to legislative procedures. Uh, the theme that the, uh, that these changes, um, look at, uh, basically give, uh, bill sponsors more, uh, power to control bills. Um, it is, would be the, uh, uh, sole responsibility of a bill sponsor to request suspension of the rules for first and third reading at a single meeting. Um, it would reserve the right to, uh, to both put on the informal calendar and take off of the informal calendar to the primary bill sponsor. Um, and then specifies that a bill can have, uh, multiple co-sponsors, but only one primary bill sponsor that would exercise those powers. Um, Section 4.1 is a change to specify that the mayor cannot hold any other city officer employment within the city. This is the same as, uh, current Section 3.58, which relates to council members. So there's, uh, matching up the member, uh, the, the, the rules for other, uh, city employment with the mayor and the council members. Uh, Section 4.1D, uh, is another subsection relating to removal of the mayor. This language mirrors the, uh, the language for, uh, removal of council members, with the exception that it would take a four-fifths majority vote to remove the mayor. Uh, Section 4.4, um, adds, uh, Subsection 11 to the powers of the mayor, which provides that the, uh, the mayor has the authority to remove members of committees, boards, or commissions for misconduct or neglect of duty with the consent of the council. You'll find similar language spread out throughout the, both the charter and throughout the ordinances. This is kind of a centralization, clarification of this, of this power. Uh, Section 5.1 relates to the city administrator and, uh, clarifies that the city administrator's entire compensation, not just the salary, must be approved by the mayor, um, and a majority of the city council, or by a two-thirds majority of the city council. Um, Section 5.2, I think, are, uh, can be considered technical changes to clarify existing, uh, powers of the city administrator. Amendments to Section 3.6 specify that, um, specify that the police personnel board would forward, um, its list of eligible candidates to the city administrator, not the mayor. And, um, I actually want to go back on this one. This, this document's, uh, its history is a little, little, uh, complicated, and I think this may be a recommended change that has already been made in a previous election. So that may require a, uh, uh, taking this out of the current bill. I'm, I just need to look into that a little bit further. And then, um, Section 12.9, another technical change, really, that relates to calculation of time. Right now, our rules are pretty opaque, and the time deadlines on how you calculate time, uh, differs on how far the deadline is out. That is a fairly complicated, uh, uh, way to, uh, to, uh, to calculate time. So this simplifies it, basically says, whatever the deadline states, it should state either business days or calendar days. And if, uh, and if it doesn't state, then there's a default rule of calendar days. And so that would equally apply to all, uh, deadlines throughout, uh, throughout the, the code and, and any documents that the city has. And then finally, uh, changes to Section 3.5, um, specify that all current elected and appointed officials would continue to hold their office after charter amendments take place until the end of their term. Uh, this is a grandfathering clause that, um, that would apply to office holders who may no longer possess all qualifications for their office after a new charter goes into place. Um, and, and other words, no, no, uh, current office holder would lose their nu, their current office because of the charter changes. They would be able to serve out their, their, uh, full term. So that is, uh, Proposition A. Uh, Proposition B, uh, relates to mayor and city council term limits. So currently, what the city has are lifetime term limits that, uh, limit the amount of service, uh, that a person may serve in either the office of council member or mayor to eight years. Um, so this, uh, proposed change removes a lifetime term limit and replaces it with a, uh, single-term waiting period. So how that operates, so a person can serve four consecutive two-year terms as a council member, and then, um, would then be ineligible to, uh, run again until another full two-year, uh, council member term has run. So, so the idea- So, so the idea is, is to create breaks in service and not have a permanent incumbent to, you know, allow other people to run for office, but not impose a, a lifetime ban on service. You know, someone that may serve as city councilmember for, you know, for a full eight terms, very young in their career, leave for quite a while, you know, now that person would not be able to run again. With this change, a person after sitting out the waiting period could run again. So, it would eliminate a, a lifetime ban. Same rule for the mayor, except that it's, would be two terms, two four-year terms, and then requiring that the, a person who serves two consecutive terms as mayor sit out a four, a full four-year mayoral term before running for mayor again. So, once again, the idea of preventing a perpetual incumbent and, and requiring that new people run for office and hold office. Proposition C relates to the office of city prosecutor. Currently, the city office of city prosecutor is an elected office. This proposed amendment would change it to a appointed office utilizing an independent selection committee. The selection committee would consist of two members appointed by the Executive Committee of the Cole County Bar Association, and one member appointed by the mayor. This committee would appoint its nominees to the city council for approval, and once approved, the city prosecutor would serve for a four-year term. As the position is appointed and not elected, the residency requirement is removed. Vacancies would be filled in the same manner as original appointment, meaning that there's no, that there's no partial terms. So, if someone were to leave office, then the, the selection committee would be called on to make a nomination, and then if approved, that person would have a full four-year, four-year office, and we wouldn't mess, mess around with having partial terms. The amendment also adds provisions for removal of the city prosecutor for causes listed upon a two-thirds vote of the city council. Proposition D relates to conflicts of interest. Currently, Section twelve point one is entitled "Personal Financial Conflicts." This recommendation would change this title to "Conflicts and Interests," and then add a new subsection D, which prohibits city officials and employees from voting or acting on contracts with other political subdivisions or nonprofits where the city official or employee sits on the governing body of the political subdivision or nonprofit with, with whom the city is doing business. The prohibition does not apply where the city official or employee is sitting on the outside political subdivision or nonprofit in their capacity as a city official employee. So, what this does, it recognizes that there could be situations where there is a conflict of interest, but does not necessarily entail a financial conflict of interest, but rather a situation where a person is serving on, on the governing body of, of another political subdivision or, or a, or a nonprofit board. Proposition E amends Section twelve point two in two significant ways. Section twelve point two is entitled "Prohibitions." The first amendment would add a new subsection C, which would prohibit formal, former council members and mayors from accepting compensative appointed positions within the city until at least two years have passed since leaving office. And then new subsection twelve point two D would prohibit council members, the mayor, city administrator, city clerk, departmental directors, and members of the Parks and Recreation Commission from also serving as publicly elected governing body members of other political subdivisions in statewide elective office or in the Missouri General Assembly during their office and term. Similar to twelve point one, the prohibition does not apply where the city office holder is serving on the outside political subdivision governing body in their capacity as a city office holder. So, those are the amendments. So, how we came, came to have these in front of the city council, if you recall, the city council created the Charter Review Advisory Committee, which was tasked of reviewing the entire charter and making recommendations. There were a couple of deadlines that were put in, in front of that committee to bring their recommendations to the city. One such deadline was July ninth. The committee submitted these recommendations to the, to the city clerk and forwarded on to the city council by that July ninth deadline. These, these, these ordinance would place these ballot measures on the November two thousand eighteen general election, which is, I believe, November the seventh, I believe. Sixth, sorry. So, if there's any questions, I would be happy to help out.
Thank you, Mr. Moleman. Councilman Hussey, and I appreciate you and, and Councilman Fitzwater serving as the liaisons to this committee. As you can tell, there's extensive work that's been done. Councilman Hussey?
Thank you, Mayor, and I would also recognize Councilman Hensley, who I attended most of those meetings as well, and Ryan and Megan from his office, who diligently track the progress of this committee and, and tried to make sense of times of the conversation of the committee. I know nobody from the committee is here present this evening, but I would just commend them for their work. It's not just meetings where they're meeting in person to discuss, but, but the individuals that served on this certainly took time to review the charter in great detail. Most, if not all of them, researched other city documents. By that, I don't mean other Jefferson city documents. They went out and did some research on their own about how their cities have structured some of these things, looking for sample language when they came upon an item to discuss further. And, and the conversation at times in these meetings was fascinating, the level of, of detail and depth they would get into, and the back and forth on what may seem very into the weeds to the general public, but word choice and language choice can have a great impact on how something is interpreted and certainly what it means. And I think they did their best to, to present changes they felt like were in the best interest of the city at, at this time. Some of it clarifying, some of it making substantive change. In drafting these bills, myself and Councilman Fitzwater, you know, had recommended to Ryan to sort of separate things out, so that not everything's lumped together on one ballot item, and, and certainly the council can take things up as they please. I would reiterate that the committee met the deadlines that we presented to them earlier this year in the creation of this committee, and, and filed the report with the given time. I, I thought the report that was sent to us, the staff summary, does a good job of, of summarizing things. And I, I know there would be council questions and discussion. I'd encourage council members to, to certainly ask those tonight, speak out, ask some questions, seek some clarification. I would like us to do everything we can in our powers to, to do that tonight and in the coming weeks, so that we make a determination about taking action to put some things in November if possible. And I will add this, and I can't speak for Councilman Hensley and Councilman Fitzwater who were at those meetings. I can't say that I agree with everything proposed by the Charter Committee, and so certainly don't take my name as a bill sponsor on this as my endorsement of every piece of change within that particular bill. I would even call to attend in the legislative procedures in three point one-one. I think that committee probably spent two meetings, if not more, on that particular thing, did research, and it's not what I would have drafted. But, and I think I even tried to share that at one of the meetings, but they certainly went their, their route and, and made changes. And a number of the members of the committee are former members of the council, and so for them, I think it was trips down memory lane of how it used to be and what would take place, and can you remember this story and these sorts of things. So, certainly have at it. I ask questions, give thoughts. I can share what my perspective, and I think Councilman Hensley can do the same, and, and staff who were present as well.
Thank you. Councilman Graham?
Yes, I just have one question, and to council members Hussey and Fitzwater, thank you for, for certainly taking the lead on, on this, on these items. Looking at the various propositions, A through E, were those voted on by the charter members individually, or were they sent to the council as, as a whole?
So, both. Every single change in this document was approved individually by, by the, by the committee. So, as we went through the document, it, we, they took votes on recommended changes on a mostly section-by-section basis. And so, so those, 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 those changes have different kind of vote counts, you know, some were unanimous, some were split. But, in the end, the committee also took a vote to forward on the, the entire package of changes, and I believe that was approved six to one, with, with two absent. So, so to answer your question, both.
Councilman Hussey?
And if I could add, add, my interpretation of, of the chairman and the committee was they did not feel like it was their place to package these in bill format or, or lump together. And I think I heard that a number of times, to say, "It's not our direction as a committee to tell the council how to put this on the ballot and put these three together and these two, but rather, here's all of the changes as our recommendations are, and leave it to the council to make a determination as to how best to put these things together for the ballot." Is that correct?
Yeah, I think that's fair.
And how, how many weeks did it, did this committee convene?
I believe we started meeting in April and met at least twice a month, ten times.
And I'm just concerned, I guess, putting this before this body during this time, which we really haven't had a chance to really dive into. I have a concern with, with that. So, maybe it's just me, but props A through E, I would hope that we would spend some more time talking about these individually, other than just a brief moment, and then passing it on to, to be voted on. That's just me.
Councilman Hussey?
I, I appreciate the perspective. I would reiterate that the, the, the final report from the committee, as required by resolution, was presented to the council second week of July. And so, we've had the recommended changes. Now, they haven't been in bill format as presented this way, and so, I would just say that there has been time for, for all of us to review those things, and we have time over the next two weeks. If people have questions, that's fine. If there's a feeling not November, and if that's the, the concern, not the specifics of the bills, but just not wanting to do this in November, then I would like for council members to sort of express that and not use that as a placeholder. Don't vote no on these things because you don't want to see them in November. Hope my points come across here. I would like to see us make every effort possible to at least give these the fullest consideration to put them on the ballot in November. I think that, that is what the resolution spelled out. That is what the committee did. They met the deadlines they were charged with. I don't think we should, you know, you know, deviate from those efforts and, and not respect the work they've done solely because we're not going to dig in, in our time to research these and ask the questions. Now, I get that it's a big vote. Some of these are substantive changes. And I would say this, that these change, again, these are just put forth. All we did was take what they proposed and package them in bill format. I may not even vote yes on all of these bills before you, as the sponsor, co-sponsor of Councilman Fitzwater. It's okay for us to vote no on these things and give feedback to the committee to say, "We don't agree with that." It is okay for us to change the language of these proposals as well, if we think it needs further clarification. I don't think that there's any expectation that we are simply a rubber stamp to put this forward. And so, I'm okay if in two weeks' time, it's a eight to two vote to not put something on the ballot.
Thank you. Now, we first read number thirty-eight. So, should we go through each one? I know Emily's going to need to read them as well, and then ask the questions on the individual bill basis. I see a hand over here, Councilman Prather, do you have a?
We can wait if we're gonna go through all of them.
Because we need to, we'll have to have Emily go through them anyway, so maybe that can hone in on specific questions for each one. Council be okay with that? Okay. Why don't we start then with number thirty-eight, which was item A, which Emily has already read, which was a lot of the general items? Does council, and, and I mean, we can certainly bounce around, but does council have anything specifically on Proposition A? Any questions, deliberation? Councilman Hussey?
I mean, again, on this one, I would add on three point one-one, the legislative procedure section. I don't, I'm not a big fan of how that's structured. I, there was some conversation, the committee actually asked for the, the rules that are created by ordinance to govern this process. To me, it seems just as though the rules of how a council conducts business probably could be set aside, and the rules that are passed by a council, and not necessarily put within a governing document like this. I will say that I think some of their conversation was directly motivated by, you know, the, the previous charter proposals that got put on the informal calendar, then pulled off, and it was one of these back thirty years ago that was not allowed, and the rules say this, and, and so, again, it was previous council members trying to say, "This is how it used to be, let's put it that way." Not that there's anything wrong with that, but...
Councilman Prather?
Yes, I did have a question, this particular one, and as far as the other ones go, I probably won't be able to digest them probably until the next meeting, because there's a lot in them, so, but, but on this particular one, where the, uh, sponsor would be the only one to be able to take it off the informal calendar, my question would be is, if it's something that's timely, I'll just, throughout the budget, for example, and it's put on the formal calendar, and it's, and it's my intention to take it off once we discussed the, the last meeting, and I'm not able to attend that meeting because I'm sick or whatever, does it just die?
I think it probably would. That was, that was...
We would have to have some type of...
That was, that was...
Right.
Mentioned as a potential pitfall of this particular approach. And so, yeah, that, that, that was something that was specifically kind of contemplated if, if that, if, if a, a bill sponsor, for whatever reason, was unable to attend, and the, the, the committee made this recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions or deliberation on, on A? Councilman Mahalovich?
Yeah, I, I think I have a lot of issues with A, including three point one-one. I'm not in favor of changing to three point eight regarding the city clerk. Four point one, removal of what? Oh, four point one, I had a question on. It didn't seem like there was a method to remove a person based on their inability, physical or mental, to, to perform the job of either council or mayor. It seemed like that was an omission, that you've covered bases everywhere else, but what if a person is not? Might want to consider that. And then six point three regarding the police, you said you was going to have to check in on that?
Yeah, I, I, I believe that the change that is, that is recommended in here was actually approved.
Okay, so...
Was actually already approved in a previous ordinance. I'm, I'm having a hard time finding the date of that, but I think that, that may be how the current language is actually reflected, so...
The one that, that appears to be the low-hanging fruit is the A, in terms of the nomenclature changes, but these other, other items added to A, I would, I would have attempts to amend or remove after discussion, and I'm not sure what, what we're trying to solve. What problem are we actually trying to solve by some of that? Well, really, it's back to this powers thing, and the city clerk, I mean, I don't, I don't know why, what we're trying to, what, what problem did we see that we're trying to solve? Did, did the, the Charter Committee see that they were trying to resolve by changing those things? I did read the minutes, thanks for getting those out to us, and there wasn't a lot of depth in some of the discussion, and some kind of appeared to, you know, just give the, the final vote on it. And not all of these amendments were, were, it was just a majority or simple majority that passed it, so there was obviously some dissenting opinions about adding some of these, so... But currently, I wouldn't be in favor of the three point eight and the three point one-one additions to this one.
Further questions or deliberation on A? Okay, why don't we move to twenty eighteen thirty-nine?
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, submitting an amendment to the charter of the City of Jefferson relating to term limits on the offices of councilmember and mayor to a vote of the... mayor to a vote of the citizens of the City of Jefferson.
Any council questions, deliberation on B? Councilman Mahalovich?
Just one question. Maybe I didn't read this clear enough. What happens if, is it, you can, as a council member, say, you finish your eight years, four terms, and then you wait to, and then you do the same thing over and over again?
Yeah, in theory, you could do that. The ban is on four consecutive terms, and so, you can string up as many four consecutive terms as Father Time would allow.
The original charter, yeah. The original charter had no term limits. Is that correct?
I believe that's correct. Term limits were added later.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions on B? Okay, 2018-40.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri submitting an amendment to the charter of the City of Jefferson relating to the office of city prosecutor to a vote of the citizens of the City of Jefferson.
Questions, comments? Councilman Hesse?
I would just add that this was, this particular topic dominated a lot of conversation amongst the committee. They seemed to bounce around with where they wanted to end up on this particular issue. And I think that, you know, this is one of those moments, there are some dissenting opinion about, you know, some fundamental disagreement about whether or not it should be an elected position versus an appointed in any way, shape, or form. And so, I would certainly just leave it at that. And there was another change about, if I'm correct, moving this position to a four-year appointment from a two-year term, correct?
Correct.
And so, I think in the end, the committee had some comfort with this model. There was discussion about, you know, how would the Cole County Bar Association pick their member? Should the city actually have more weight in that and these sorts of things? But, I mean, in the end, I think that the committee probably felt comfortable with the resolution here, but still, some on this committee who felt like, "Nope, this should be an elected position." And, you know, even us council members were sort of asked on the spot what our thoughts were, and of the three of us present, I think that I was the one who was more open to the appointed process, where the other two indicated a preference for an elected position if they had, all things being equal. So, again, these are standalone bills, and so, if people have issue with this one, I know we've talked about the prosecutor issue before because it's been before us as a potential charter change this past spring. We can certainly discuss it, debate it, but I wouldn't want us, if we're opposed to it, we're opposed to it if that's what the straw poll tells us, but let's not let opposition to a particular one get in the way of taking action on the others as well.
Any further questions? Councilman Hensley?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, as Councilman Hesse mentioned, I was upfront with the review commission the entire time about my concern about moving from an elected model to an appointed model. My default tends to be keeping the responsibility with and the accountability to the voters to decide who should serve as our city prosecutor and as our municipal judge. And moving to an appointment process, and I will say that the process suggested here is a creative one. It's modeled on the Missouri plan to a large degree. It's creative and interesting, and I thought about it a lot, but I still came back to, for me personally, the importance of allowing the voters to decide and requiring that this position remain accountable to the voters. And in, you know, many other places, we've seen over the last several years, the risks associated with detaching accountability when it comes to local prosecutors. And I appreciate the safeguard provided by election for that office. On the four-year term also, isn't it true that the, is the municipal judge two years or four years?
Two years.
I had just a general concern with those positions not mirroring each other, or even the municipal judge potentially going to four years and the prosecutor staying at two, but that was really more of a symmetry concern. You know, if the thought is making it more clear and providing a more direct process for the removal of an elected prosecutor, I think that the additions on page seven of eight in our packets make sense. I think that is a sensible thing to have in there. But overall, the method of selection, for me anyway, I'm most comfortable staying with the elected position.
Councilman Mahalovich?
I tend to agree with Councilman. Seems to me that if you were to try to make this argument for city prosecutor, you'd make the same argument for the judge. I mean, if you feel the same way, the same way would apply, your same argument would apply. I'm in favor of keeping it as elected, but the one issue I may have is, should either not be able to fulfill their duty as, in that position, as either a prosecutor or a judge due to not having a license, what's the cleanup? What can we do as citizens should the, either one become disbarred, in other words?
Sure. City code sets forth a procedure for the office of the city councillor to take over the duties of the city prosecutor in the event that the city prosecutor is unable to serve for any reason. And that is, that's practiced, you know, on a, currently on a, you know, it's a regular happenstance. Either the city prosecutor gets sick and, you know, for whatever reason, can't make it to court, office of the city councillor will fill in on a court date for the city prosecutor and executes those powers in his absence, or in situations where the city prosecutor is conflicted out for whatever reason, can't represent the city against a particular person, usually because that particular person is a former client on a different matter, office of the city councillor would step in. So, that is a current process that we have and would keep that in place for as long as the city council wants to keep that in place. I think it works pretty good. For municipal judge, it's similar if, for whatever reason, that the municipal judge is unable to serve, the city code provides that the mayor can appoint a temporary judge until a permanent replacement can be elected. So, there are current mechanisms in place to deal with that type of situation.
Councilman Graham?
Yeah, I just want to echo and say, I agree with what my two colleagues have said prior in regards to taking that right or that privilege away from the citizens of Jefferson because the city prosecutor certainly would answer to the citizens of Jefferson. So, taking it away, I guess I do have a question if that should happen. Who would the city prosecutor answer to if that position should come as an appointed position?
It would be accountable to the city council.
And I don't, I have some serious reservations about that, but I'm just going to leave it to what I said earlier, is that I agree with what my colleague said earlier, and leaving it in the hands of the citizens of Jefferson to elect that position, so...
And I'd like to just clarify what I said. He would be accountable, he or she would be accountable to the city council, but could only to the extent set forth for the reasons of removal that are in the charter. So, the council wouldn't be able to say, you know, "We need more parking tickets, you're fired." The reasons for removal are limited to those reasons that are set forth in this amendment. I can go over them if you'd like to.
No, I'm fine. I think I've made myself clear as it relates to where I stand, and another concern is that, you know, if there's some type of city ordinance that's being violated and we feel as if they should be a stronger penalty or the max or whatever, I think that there could be some type of influence that could say, "They're violating this, step it up." I think so. Maybe I'm wrong. And I think that if we do put those responsibilities back into somewhat the hands of the law department, I think that that's going to, you guys are going to ask for an additional person to help in those areas because right now, that person is, what, two days a week? And to hear, you know, those additional cases, I think that we would have to at some point add an additional person in the law office. So, I'm just totally against it.
Any further comments, deliberation? Councilman Hensley?
Thank you. I'm just curious, do we know if the Cole County Bar Association is willing to participate in this?
I haven't heard anything from the Cole County Bar Association yet.
Do we know if they've been approached?
I believe that they have, but I haven't heard anything.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Hesse?
I would just add that Councilman Hensley touched on a point that there was some distinction made in conversation about how you elect, select, appoint, and also a conversation that was very specific about removal from office and what that process looked like, and concerns that there was not a current mechanism in place if there was the need for that to take place for whatever reason, for that to be done, just as, you know, in the previous, the proposition A that was before us, it clarified that related to the mayor, the language that was currently in there for the council already. And so, I would just say the charter committee drew some distinction there and had some in-depth conversation on, in both of those areas related to this. The proposal here captures both. They didn't separate them out, but I certainly would not want what Councilman Hensley pointed out about that process to get overlooked simply based on the appointment process spelled out as well.
Councilwoman Wiseman?
Thank you. Is there currently in place a mechanism for removal for office for the judge?
Not through the city. So, judges are accountable to really two bodies. The first, the municipal division of the Cole County Court is subject to the authority of the presiding judge, so, up there. So, there's supervision that is supposed to take place between the presiding judge of the Cole County Court and the municipal division, which is a division of the Cole County Court. And then, also, there's a body called the Commission on Judicial Conduct and Enforcement or something like that. And that is the body that, if there is a formal complaint against a judge, that they investigate and then can remove a judge from office. So, there's, there are mechanisms in place, but they don't exist within the city. They're with the court, and then they're ultimately with a body that's appointed by the Supreme Court.
Councilman Schreiber?
I've had a problem since the very beginning with the issue involving the city prosecutor. You know, there may not be anything wrong at all, but at the same time, I think that the comments that have been expressed here this evening, there's still the perception that there could be some influence by the city council or whatever. And so, I believe that the responsibility lies with the voters and that those voters should make the determination as to the election of the city prosecutor.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments? Okay. All right, 2018-41.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri submitting an amendment to the charter of the City of Jefferson relating to conflicts of interest to a vote of the citizens of the City of Jefferson.
Comments, questions? Okay, none on this one. Okay, at this time, okay. 2018-42.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri submitting an amendment to the charter of the City of Jefferson relating to prohibitions and incompatible offices to a vote of the citizens of the City of Jefferson.
Questions, comments, deliberation at all? Councilman Hesse?
I mean, I will say back on the previous one, they sort of get intertwined a little bit. You read conflicts of interest and then incompatible offices. I would just go back to the incompatible offices one. There was a lot of wordsmithing to take place to make sure that it read correctly about what's a governing body of a political subdivision. For example, the mayor, you serve on the Board of Governors for Missouri State University, and certainly, you know, we had to ensure that all of a sudden, that was not prohibited because you're not elected to that, publicly elected to that body. And the word publicly was very important there. On the incompatible offices, I think it certainly further clarifies things. I would just ask that people, you know, read into that because there was a lot of conversation about how you, you know, what is incompatible. You know, the inclusion of the Parks and Recreation Commission in here as well could certainly raise some attention to say, as a commission member, you know, you're not included with incompatible offices that include election to political subdivisions. And so, certainly, take a look at this. I asked, you know, Ryan, when we were putting this together, to set this one aside as well because I think it, to me, it was not just a cleanup technical change. There was some substantive change to this one in particular, and so, I would just say, certainly take a look at it, especially related to the holding employment with the city two years afterwards. I mean, you hear that talked a lot about in the press, about that revolving door. I don't think we necessarily have that at City Hall, but it doesn't mean that it couldn't be an issue at some point in time. So, take a review of it and certainly ask any questions or express concerns or ideas that you may have.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, great discussion on those charter amendments. Thirteen bills pending, 2018-26.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a grant agreement between the City of Jefferson and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for assistance with operating expenses for the air traffic control tower at the Jefferson City Memorial Airport for the period of November 1, 2017 through October 31, 2018.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. And I think the clerk, reading the title, explained it very well, but it's basically a grant agreement, MoDOT, to help us with our costs on the airport tower up to $50,000.
Thank you. Any questions, deliberation? Roll call, please.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hesse?
Aye.
Kimna?
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Graham?
Aye.
Bill passes, 2018-27.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri amending the fares charged by the transit system to include a single-day pass.
Mr. Marash?
I think there's an amendment on this one.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Councilman Hesse?
I would put forth an amendment, and Mr. Mullman, please help me get the language corrected, but I guess under paragraph J of this bill to add language that says, "The director shall contract for sale universal passes through the program approved by the ordinance of the council, subject to approval by the city administrator." Would that be correct, Ryan? Or would you lead off the sentence with, "Subject to approval of the city administrator, comma, the director shall contract"?
For, for purposes of this particular document, I think what, at least I would prefer for just clarity of authority is, is replace the office of director of public works with city administrator.
Okay.
And in both places, both in the first sentence and then in the second one, and then that can be a duty that the city administrator would have authority to delegate. And then that can be a duty that the city administrator would have authority to delegate to, you know, whatever office is appropriate to handle those duties. I think that's probably a cleaner way to do it.
So, my motion to amend would be to substitute, or delete Director of Public Works, or any mention of the director in section J and replace with city administrator.
I second that.
Okay, Mrs. Donaldson, did you get that language? Okay, we have a motion and second to amend. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? So now, we'll take up the motion as amended. The bill, I mean, sorry. And you first read it. Are there any further questions, comments on the bill? Roll call, please.
Hesse? Kimna? Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater? Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Bill passes. Item 14 in Formal Calendar 201821, Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At the last council meeting, the council directed staff to draft language that would put in place a process for expanding a local historic district, as was put forward by a number of comments from the public when, at the public hearing for the School Street Local Historic District. Staff have drafted that language at the advice of the Law Department. That has been placed on the agenda for the Planning and Zoning Commission for review and recommendation to the council. That meeting will take place on Thursday, and that's August 9th here in this room. We've also placed it on the agenda for review by the Historic Preservation Commission. That meeting would take place on August 14th, but the bill would be scheduled to appear in front of the council on August 20th, and a public hearing on that date as well. So, the council would have the potential to suspend the rules and pass the bill at that, at that meeting. That would put in place the process for amending the boundaries of a local historic district, and then it would be, yeah, the council's pleasure on how they deal with the bill that's on the informal calendar with respect to how, when the church would apply, whether that would be right away or as a later action after approval of, or vote on the district. I'd be happy to answer any questions on that matter.
Thank you. So, P and Z is Thursday night. The council has a budget meeting Thursday night, so I assume our budget meeting is across the hall then? We usually meet in here, so it's across?
Yeah, sunshine law requires you have to accommodate an expected crowd, and we're expecting more people to attend P and Z meeting than the budget meeting, so.
They typically meet in here.
So, you got, you got kicked out.
Okay. My other question too, typically, I guess our council liaison is Councilman Fitzwater to P and Z, correct?
No, ma'am, that would be me.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. Councilman Graham? But my thought is, I just am mentioning that that would be difficult because you would, for you, you wouldn't be able to attend, and it sounds like there may be a lot on that agenda, although, are they recorded, correct, P and Z?
In this room, it's recorded, yes.
Okay, so there would be an opportunity for council, I'm just thinking council members sometimes may want to attend, whether they're even in addition to the liaison with that topic on there.
Councilwoman Wiseman is the co-alterant, so.
Okay, so, there would be an opportunity then to watch the meeting at a later date for council if they would want to be up to speed on at least the discussion that's had at P and Z. Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Barron? Or council comments? Okay. Councilman Mahalovich?
Just one guy, when this, assuming this process goes through, what is the, what's the anticipated duration for a application?
And so, ultimately, I'd defer to Ryan, but I believe the process would be very similar to the initial establishment of the district in terms of it going in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission, being dealt with, very similar to a rezoning case. And so, the process is a two to three month timeline. And so, that would basically mean that an application by the church might take some time in order to process. And so, that is the one concern I might have to voice to the council is if the intent is to hold the bill until the church decides to sign the, you know, to apply and that application gets processed, that could be some time for that to take place. The other option is to vote on the district, have that decision in place, and then the church would be free, if approved, to proceed at their own leisure in terms of making an application.
Okay, any further?
Can't resist the obvious pun, that it would be kind of a leap of faith if we passed that for the application to go through, right? Okay.
Good one. Councilman Hensley, can you follow that one up?
Not with humor, because that was hilarious. I would like, though, to ask a question about the text of what I've seen of the proposed change. And it seemed to limit new properties to those that, I think the phrase is abut, or abutting properties, to properties that are already within the district. Is there a requirement that all districts be perfectly contiguous, or, an existing requirement that I'm not aware of? Or would there be anything wrong with allowing other properties that are within the general area and that share the same general history to also be covered by it, even if there's no perfect land-based connection among all properties?
Generally, a require, no, okay, to answer your question, no, there's no requirement. Generally, in any type of land-based type of district forming, a contiguous and compact requirement is typically included, and it's more for administration and enforcement than anything. It gets hard to, to kind of wrap your hands around these when you have a single district that is sparse out, you know, gaps in land. I would say that if there were, that were, if there were properties that, that would merit consideration as part of a local historic district but are not physically connected to an existing historic district, I think a probably more appropriate approach would be to form their own historic district, because I think part of the historic district is recognizing a shared value and shared characteristics in a neighborhood. And if you have a portion of a district that's not physically connected to the other portion, that those ideals are perhaps whittled down. And that may not be appropriate in all circumstances, but may be something that you want to keep track of. And then also, you would want to prevent abuse of the process. You would not want to have a situation where someone is trying to add on to an existing district to obtain whatever benefit because it may be an easier process, as opposed to going what it should do and form its own historic district and have kind of its own merit consideration in front of the HPC and P and Z. So, those are kind of the thoughts into why it was set up that way, but no, there's no hard and fast rule that says that you, that you have to have them contiguous and compact.
So, if there were owners of properties that are in the same general area, even along the same main road, separated mainly by highway overpass, that feel that they share the, a similar history with the existing district, the only concern seems to be an administrative concern.
I think that's, I think that's probably fair. At the same time, there's nothing that says that a historic district cannot include properties that are not necessarily contributing to the historic. And so, a solution could be, is it worth adding properties that may be part of a historic neighborhood, but for whatever reason have been redeveloped or whatever? And while the structure that's existing on there, you know, doesn't contribute significantly to the, you know, to the, to the historic district, it's still, you know, as a matter of land, in a place where historic things happened, still has a place within that historic district. That may be a better approach in those types of situations.
So, and this is a crazy question, and I'm not suggesting this necessarily right now, but within our existing rules and perhaps also those that have been proposed and that are going through the pipeline, could a street itself, I don't mean the houses along the street, I mean like the physical street within the area, and maybe one or two streets, could we, could the streets be declared historically significant and included within this, within the district based on the totality of things that have occurred along these streets over the course of a couple hundred years?
I think that'd be a completely reasonable interpretation.
So then, anyone who has property along those, along those two streets would seem to own abutting or adjoining property for the sake of administration?
Yeah, I mean, your only concern, your only concern is that, to the extent that there is a shared history, you want to make sure that you're doing something that's, that ties them together, and eventually, you're going to be run up into the bounds of due process and equal protection. And so, if you spread that along a street too far, there's going to be people along that street that say, hey, I have nothing to do with this, and you're just doing whatever. And so, you know, you need to constrain yourself. I don't think you can continue that in perpetuity, but as long as there is an articulable, articulable kind of shared history, then, then I think that's a completely reasonable way to go about things.
Well, I'm regularly told that I need to constrain myself, so I'll take that advice now, and I appreciate your comments.
Any further comments, questions? We'll move on to resolutions, RS 20188.
A resolution of the City of Jefferson, Missouri amending the adopted CDBG 2018 Annual Action Plan and authorizing its resubmission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Ms. Johnson, Johnston?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Community Development Block Grant Entitlement Program is an annual grant the city has received from the Department of Housing and Urban Development since 2004, and is allocated according to our five-year consolidated plan and our annual action plan. The city adopts these based on a system of public meetings and comment periods. This past November, Resolution 2017-15 was presented to city council. The annual action plan presented in that resolution was based on an anticipatory 2018 allocation amount of $244,499. In May, HUD officially notified the city that 2018 allocation amount will be $286,021. This represents a 15% increase over the 2017 allocation. And as a result, we have amended the 2018 Annual Action Plan with this new amount and have distributed it between the down payment program, we're helping two additional households, first-time home buyers, with down payment assistance up to an amount of $5,000. We've added a little over $8,000 to our infrastructure improvement budget. We've added another building to the demolition aspect of this grant for another $15,000. And then, our annual amount each year, 20% of that is given to administration of the program, so that was increased to $257,204. The public hearing was held on June 26th, and comments were accepted on the proposed plan through July 27, 2018, and we did not receive any, any official comments on the amended plan. It was presented to Public Works and Planning Commission on July 12th, and this amended annual action plan is due to be submitted to HUD by August 16th. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Is there a motion to accept the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater? Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hesse?
Aye.
Kimna?
Resolution passes. 20189.
A resolution authorizing the city administrator to allow full-time city employees to volunteer during the United Way Days of Caring while on duty.
Mr. Kroll?
Thank you. This is a resolution clarifying past practice that city council supports full-time city employees to use up to four hours of work time in support of the United Way, Days of Caring, and other not-for-profit organizations, as may be approved by the employee supervisors.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, discussion? Roll call, please.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater? Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hesse?
Aye.
Kimna? Mahalovich?
Aye.
Resolution passes. RS 201810.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute a letter of engagement with Gilmore &amp; Bell, PC.
Mr. Mulman?
Thank you. This resolution would approve a engagement letter with Gilmore &amp; Bell to serve as the city's special redevelopment council for the Missouri State Penitentiary Redevelopment Project. RFPs went out earlier this summer with responses coming back in July. A selection, a recommendation committee consisting of myself, Finance Director Margie Miller, and Planning and Protective Services Director Sonny Sanders scored the firms that submitted RFPs. We also had assistance from Associate City Councilor Brian Woolford, and Mayor Turgeon, and Council Member Wiseman assisting on interviews of select submissees. The selection committee selected or recommends Gilmore &amp; Bell based on the firm experience in similar and complex economic development projects, on the specific experiences and knowledge of the particular members of the firm that would work on the, on the project for the city, and on, on cost factors, primarily looking at the proposed hourly rates. I think the selection committee was particularly impressed with Gilmore &amp; Bell and the breadth of services that they provide. Not only do they have substantial experience in the realm of economic development and redevelopment projects, but they also have a tax, a tax department that can provide insight and experience to help us avoid stepping in any particular hairy tax situations. And also, they provide bond services, so if this were a project where the city were looking to issue obligations of some type, they would be able to handle those services without having you go get a, another law, law firm to, to serve as a bond counsel. So, if there's any questions, I am happy to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Mulman, and want to thank Councilwoman Wiseman for serving on that group as well. And as we know, the deed for MSP was signed last week by the governor, so it's an exciting time as we start working on this. And something too, that we were commended on was the fact that we were bringing in the special legal counsel for economic development. At this stage of the process, typically, it can be, they can be asked to be brought in at a later time, and it's nice to bring them in early on in the process. So, with a project of this magnitude and wanting to do it right and having that assistance will be very beneficial to have the experts in the field to help us, so I appreciate that, and I think I saw Hensley's hand first.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I thought Gilmore &amp; Bell's package and their credentials were, were very impressive. I also appreciated seeing that the RFP included within the scope of work evaluating project feasibility, and that Gilmore &amp; Bell said that they, quote, "can proceed immediately to perform the services described in the RFP." So, personally, I enjoyed that. What I would like to see, before I would be very comfortable agreeing to this, are some changes made within Section 1, and really making Section 1 contingent on first adding a few things. One would be hour estimates per phase before beginning work and before the billable clock starts running, so that we could have some control over the, the hours billed. The second would be some dollar limits beyond which they couldn't go without additional permission. And then, regular progress and billing reports, I assume submitted to your office, but then also reported to the council for our review. And I'd be happy to make that as a formal motion if, if there's feeling, an agreement across the council. But for me personally, those are some controls I'd like to see in place first before we continue down this road.
Thank you, Councilman Hensley, and we can see if Ryan can make some suggestions with your suggestions, and I also saw Councilman Graham's hand over here.
Yes, Mr. Moulman, I was reading the, the fiscal information, and in regards to where would the funding come to, to pay this roughly $295 an hour up to, and it says that this sources could include the city's tourism tax. And could include, makes me want to ask the question, if it doesn't, then where else would it come from? It says these services could include the city's tourism tax. So what, is it saying that it could come out of general fund as well?
Yeah, I mean, these are, sorry, these are projects that expenses that could theoretically get paid out of general fund. I mean, there's certainly nothing that would limit the ability to pay the expenses out of general fund. I'm, I'm, I think maybe I'm not understanding the question, and then so, I just, I want to, I want to make sure I'm pointing you in the right direction.
I, I believe you answered the question. I'm just trying to see the, the $295 per hour is going to come out of which fund?
Sure. So, I've identified probably a couple of sources. So, so the, the MSP project for fiscal, for the current fiscal year allocated $20,000 for the MSP project.
That's still there.
That's still there.
Right.
That was in, not, that was in the-
Last year.
Last year's approval. For example, we had to pay $10 to the state to acquire the, the property that was paid out of that fund. So that is an available source of funds. Also, because the resolution that, that formed the Missouri State Penitentiary Community Partners specifically identified a convention center as a, as a, as a particular end goal to be, to be explored, for as long as that is in effect and that, that a convention center is a potential use that is specifically highlighted, the tourism tax that is, that is allocated for convention center project is also an available funding source for, for, for the project. And then, and then, of course, you could also pay out of general fund if needed, but there are, you know, I think there are funding sources that we would look to before we ever got to the general fund.
I guess that's certainly what I wanted to hear, because we have other issues or concerns that we have to pay out of general funds, and that was my major concern.
All right. Sorry about any misclarification.
You're, you're fine, thank you.
Councilman Prather?
If we pass this, who would be determining whether, or which fund it comes out of? Would it be the council, or would it be a different body?
It, it would, it would, it would be the city administrator unless the city council directs otherwise. So if the city, if the city council says it has to come out of this, you guys retain that authority to direct how the, how those services are going to get, are going to get paid.
So, but right now, it's, it doesn't say that. We would have to insert that, you know, that wording in order for that to happen, the council will have the authority to let that happen.
Yes, and that, that authority, and I don't, it's, so you could insert it tonight, or that authority could be inserted at any time, at any time.
Well, I'd like to, yeah, I want to say that I agree with Councilman Hensley's possible amendment there, but I'd also like to see that type of language included. Thank you.
Councilman Schreiber?
When the, when the engagement letter is drafted, put together, is there going to be a recommended or an established timeframe?
It, so the, the engagement letter is, is included within your packet, it's been drafted, and it doesn't include a, a timeframe. And, and part of the reason why is because we don't know what the project's going to be. And so, any timeframes that you put into a document now, they're just, they're artificial, they're, they're just pulled out of air, because we don't know what the project's going to be. You know, a simple Sid, you can do that in a year. You know, something else, you know, whole package of, of incentives and development agreements and, and, you know, whatever it could take, could take much longer. And so we don't have really an idea of what the project is, and that's part of the idea of hiring this firm, is to help figure out what is the project. And so, once we have a better idea of what the project is, we can look at timeframes, project delivery timeframes, and then, and then, and then, and then budgets. But because we don't know what the project is, any type of attempt to, to, to specify those now are, are their guesses. And, and if, you know, if we wanted to put in some, some numbers, just to, you know, make sure that we're headed in, in the right path, and, you know, we don't get too far down the road and, and we don't like where we're going, that certainly makes sense. But to say, project-wise, either timeframe or budget, I mean, it's, it's, it's impossible to tell, because we don't know what that's, what, what work we're doing yet.
And Mr. Moulman, I would want to clarify a little bit, when you say we don't know what the project is, that certainly the project is outlined generally in the land use agreement, and, and a timeline is also generally outlined, that a developer would be selected within two years, and then there's a four-year for, for the project to commence, so, to begin. So there's some kind of, there's a couple of parameters already outlined, so I, I think we all know that in this room, but when you say that, I just wouldn't want the perception to be that we don't know.
Right, right. And, and so, so there are some, some thresholds that have to be met and would be part of any type of timeframe, but, you know, I'm speaking kind of project-wide, as opposed to just those, those initial thresholds. Yes, we would need assistance in meeting those, those, those time, those timeframes that are within the existing conveyancing agreement, so.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Mahalovich, and then Hussey.
Okay. See if I summarize Councilman Hensley's items. One is phasing of the engagement contract, and for those phases, we'll have a report at those specific periods, and with the funds used. And then, Councilman Prather wants to have the city administrator engaged, or what was your addition?
My, my addition was to make sure that the decision of whether or not to, where to withdraw the money would be that of the councils, and give the city administrator direction on which way to go.
Okay. Did I summarize that accurately?
Yeah, I think I would say the three parts were hour estimates, sort of broken down by each phase of the project before they start billing, so that would be one, so hour estimates. And then, dollar limits that they can't go beyond without additional permission from the council. And then, regular progress and billing reports for our review. So reports, thresholds, and estimates.
If that's in the form of a, a motion, I would second that.
So moved.
Second.
And I know, I know Councilman Hussey also has a question.
I would, I would say that there's not been a formal motion made to adopt the resolution, and so therefore, there's no, we don't actually have a motion on the floor to even take up the resolution at this point, so that motion would have to be made first before you can jump in and start amending said resolution, correct?
Fair point.
But, it-
I withdraw the motion, for the time being.
Okay.
All right. Sorry, I'm not, I think we'll get there. My, my question is, is there urgency to completing this resolution and passing something tonight?
Tonight? Tonight, no. We do have a, we do have a timeframe for selecting a developer in the, in the conveyancing agreement, it's, it's two years from, from, from June. That, that, that clock is ticking, so I wouldn't want to put it off indefinitely by any means, but tonight, no.
And the only reason I say that is that I don't disagree with Councilman Hensley's concerns about dollar limits, but I, but I don't know what those are. What, and I don't know if, if billable hour estimates are something that you're able to provide, or if that's going to require a further conversation with Gilmore &amp; Bell.
I certainly couldn't provide them tonight.
So it seems as though there's some unanswered questions that we could not even amend into a resolution tonight to pass something without further clarification. And so it might, I mean, we could certainly not take any action tonight, and if staff felt like they had some direction on what we're seeking in a resolution, I suspect that Ryan could come back with that in, in, in written form. I think the shared concern is we just don't want to look like we're giving a blank check to a law firm to do work on this project and, and come back with a large legal bill and not anything to show for it.
So our next council meeting is the 20th, and we were holding off to set the next meeting of the Missouri State Penitentiary Community Partners, kind of pending this outcome. And typically, we would meet on like the, you know, probably the 24th, around that, like, that time is typically our monthly meetings anyway. So if you would want to come back with those specific answers, it sounds like you probably have enough direction based on the information.
Can I add, was the intention of the Community Partners Group to invite this outside legal counsel to that meeting?
We likely would. We, we need to have them engaged at the beginning, and that would likely be the next, I, we have the chair here, so I defer.
Yes.
Yes. So it'd be nice if, if we could get the answers and have it ready. It probably, honestly, would be about the same now or the next one, because the next natural monthly meeting would likely be right after that. Would that give them enough time to be prepared? That would be the question.
Probably not. At, at the, at the last MS, MSP CP meeting, what I suggested is that we hold off scheduling another meeting until, until staff and, and the, and the outside council can get to a place where we think it makes sense for them to, I mean, they need to, they need to get up to speed on the project review, the, the contracts, kind of dive in headfirst and, and learn what, you know, where they're going first before they can have a competent conversation with the committee. We don't want to just bring them down here and pay them to come down here, just to come down here and, and have a meet and greet. The first meeting, the, the goal would be to actually get some work done, so to, to, to keep with the previous schedule of meeting monthly at the end of the month, I don't think that would give them enough time to do that. But I, I think at the last meeting, that was recognized that there's going to need to be some work done before they're ready to, to meet with the, with the committee.
Councilman Hussey?
And, Mr. Moulman, does that statement of yours hold true, even if we pass the resolution tonight, that there would still not be sufficient time for them to be up to speed by August 24th? Or is it still?
I, I think that's probably still, still true. I mean, there's, there's kind of just a lot to get into, and, and I don't want to rush, I don't want to meet just for the sake of meeting. I want to make sure when we, when we come to the, to the committee that there's business to be had and, and, you know, progress to be made.
And also-
I was going to say, my sense is there's not, there's not opposition to Gilmore &amp; Bell, there's not opposition to outside legal counsel, we're just looking for some protections to the city financially, and some benchmarks in place that they have to meet certain things, so.
So perhaps there's a way we could figure a way for them to get up to speed and move so that we're not putting a delay on our next meeting. Councilman Hunz- Hensley?
Thank you. A, a few points. One is, I suspect that as soon as they're told that they've been selected, they will do whatever is necessary to be here in time for a meeting, if I, if I know lawyers correctly. The second point is, the first piece about hour estimates obviously will come 100% from Gilmore &amp; Bell. And I think that we'll be able to have an informed thought as to dollar limits, which will really be hour limits, you know, so many, so many hours at $295 an hour, based on their estimates. You know, so we really need to hear from them first, I think, before we can have an informed discussion about what sort of threshold to set before coming back for a formal review of billings or anything like that.
So is it possible then to pass this resolution and then come back to us at the next council meeting with some of those specifics? I agree with Councilman Hensley that, you know, giving them the direction that they are, the selection, would be helpful to them as well, because we certainly wouldn't want, probably wouldn't make sense for us to ask them to start reviewing without having that, because some of those answers I don't think would be, I mean, like you said, they need to come from Gilmore &amp; Bell to give us some of those estimates once they begin this process of looking into this. Councilman Hensley?
Thank you. Yeah, I, I wouldn't be comfortable with that at this point. I, I'm passing it tonight, anyway. I, I, personally, I, I would think an informal communication to them, or a formal communication, just expressing these particular concerns before we vote on the resolution would be appropriate, and I, I bet that they would respond pretty quickly.
All right, so, with all the, oh, we have two more, I'm sorry. I think it was Mahal, or Prather and Mahal.
I was just going to say that if, we're going to have budget meetings, and if we had to pass something pretty quickly, we could do so during a budget meeting, I believe, isn't that correct? No. It's, it's, it's a, it's a meeting of the Budget Committee, as opposed to a meeting of the City Council, but we've, we've piggybacked them before, so.
Okay.
But I, to be completely honest, there's, while we do have a, a timeframe we need to meet, it's not a matter of days here and there aren't going to make it or break it, so I, I would say that's probably not something that we need to be too concerned about.
Councilman, Councilwoman, or I'm sorry, we had a, Mahalovich and Wiseman. Okay, Councilwoman Wiseman.
Is it appropriate at this time for me to make a formal motion to pass it and to pass this resolution to August 20th?
I would ask. Or do we need- Councilwoman Moulman?
I, I, I think a, a motion to postpone would probably be, would probably be in order, just to, just to clarify that the, that the matter is still pending before the City Council.
So is that a motion then from-
It is a motion, motion to postpone until August 20th.
Second.
Any further questions, discussion? Roll call, please.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater? Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna? Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Thank you. 2018-11.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute a settlement agreement with Trackphone Wireless Incorporated.
Mr. Moulman?
Thank you. This is a settlement agreement between Trackphone and the City of Jefferson. Many years ago, Trackphone sued the City of Jefferson. The topic was collection of grocery receipts utility taxes on prepaid wireless services. About the same time that Trackphone sued the City of Jefferson, collection of, of, of cities sued Trackphone on a similar topic. However, the City of Jefferson was excluded from the class that was formed out of that litigation and was specifically excluded out of that class, and so the city was forced to deal with this situation on their own. So they hired the-
So they hired the law firm of Baird-Leitner out of Springfield and to represent the city, not only in the defense of the lawsuit brought by Trackphone, but also in the city's own pursuit of claims for back grocery facility gross receipts utility taxes. So what this agreement does, it settles the dispute between Trackphone and Jeff City and specifies that the services provided by Trackphone in the form of prepaid wireless services are taxable under the city's grocery receipts utility tax, and settles back taxes in the amount of $250,000. And then, also included within this agreement is a pledge by Trackphone to continue to pay grocery receipts utility taxes to the city of Jefferson on ongoing services. So in the future, when they sell prepaid wireless services to people in the city of Jefferson, they will pay the city's grocery receipts utility tax on those transactions. So there's really two things that are happening here. Settlement of back taxes for $250,000, and then a pledge to pay gross utility, grocery receipts utility taxes in the future ongoing. So like I said, the settlement amount is for $250,000. The city's fee arrangement with Baird-Leitner was for 50% of collected amounts, so after expenses, it's just north of $124,000 to the attorneys, and $124,000 to the city for settlement of back taxes. Baird-Leitner does not take any percentage of future collections, though. So those are all 100% the city of Jefferson's. The terms of the agreement are similar to the terms of settlement, defining what types of services are taxable, as the class action settlement that went into place last year. So there is uniformity on these prepaid wireless taxes with Trackphone throughout the state. So they're paying on a similar basis in every city that they're, that they're doing business in.
Thank you. Questions, council? Is there a motion to approve?
Moved.
Second.
Any further deliberation?
Just one question, the $124,000, just general fund, correct? Money coming to the city?
It's, it would be deposited into the grocery receipts utility tax, which I believe, which I believe is a general fund line item.
Get that fund balance a little higher.
Any further deliberation? Roll call, please.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Item sixteen, presentations from the gallery, Mr. Leonard Steinman, for three minutes.
Leonard Steinman, twenty-two seventeen, West Edgewood. It is very, very, very important. There's people that come from all over the country of the world to come to the United States to express their opinion about voting. If you don't think it's proper to vote, keep your mouth shut. I don't want to hear no more words from anybody that says, "Oh, it ain't proper to vote." But they're the ones that complain the most. You people on the city council and the mayor and everybody else that's running give their whole life, because in order to run for an office, you have to have respect for yourself. It's called WWJ. And if you don't go with the rule with WWJ, it's going to affect you. So get out and vote. I don't care if I'm running or not. It doesn't make me no difference if you vote for me. But have consideration for the people that gave everything they got their whole life to run for an office in the United States of America, the best country in the whole world. And I gave part of my life for that. There are several other people that have given their lives for that. Over four million people have gave their life for the United States of America. And it's very, very important. And if you don't like voting, shut your mouth, because you don't have no say-so. You belong over there in Nicole County lockup with the rest of the people that don't care. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steinman. Item seventeen, council and staff discussion of presentation topics. Item eighteen, any new business? Nineteen, any unfinished business? I forgot to mention, I wanted to congratulate Tia Griffin and Phil Stiles for winning Downtown Association Volunteer Awards Saturday night. Congrats to them. So tomorrow morning, get up and vote, then come to breakfast at City Hall, and then go to your night out in your neighborhood. On that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.